...
Meeting in order, please.
Councilmember Deans.
Here.
Councilmember Howe.
Present.
Councilmember Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Wirth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ripple.
Here.
Mayor Malpatia.
Here.
This evening, we have our prayer and pledge by Mayor Malpatia.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions, and continue to remind us that all that we do here this evening and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of your name, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great ballot for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty to be and with liberty to govern.
This evening, we have a few special presentations. If the Little Eagles group would come forward.
So, on behalf of the City of Clarksville and Council, we want to present the youth football and cheerleaders with a check to keep you guys going. We've hired number 77 here. He's going to work for the city. He says he does windows and vacuums, so. He can't work footballs and bring some people into the park next week, so. Anyway, on behalf of the City of Clarksville and Council, we want to present you all with this.
Thank you.
As you will see tonight, we're really taking a special interest in the youth in our area. We understand how important this is with the growth of our city. We understand youth sports. I know family was very supportive growing up. It's good to be involved with things, so. The Little Eagles and the Panthers are going to be teaming up next year. I play for both teams. You guys won't beat any of my records, though. Their record will not go down. But, you know, they're looking forward to making new friendships, and that's one of the biggest things about youth sports, is the friendships you make through that, which you go through all the practices, especially the money practices. Football is the best, because you all just jump around the money as the best. So, but, you know, it's just very important for our city and our growth is youth sports, so we take that a special interest here over the last few years, and so we appreciate you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Good work, Gary.
See you Monday morning.
The mayor and vice mayor have another presentation.
So, before we get started with the teams, I'd like to. City of Clarksville certificate of recognition, this certificate is presented to Coach Jerry Ripple. In honor and recognition, I'm not supposed to lie, of your coaching skills and dedication to the youth, the 76ers in all, and the Clarksville Jerry West Championships. Congratulations.
Honestly, I thought he was getting emotional there for a second. That's what I thought. I was like, wow, this has got to be a big thing. So, this year, both championship teams were coached by me. That is not why I. If we had a loss.
Who paid the referees?
Well, I did pay the referees, too, but.
Just saying.
So, you know, if we had a loss, the other team would have been asked to come here. I guess I'll have to prove that next year. So, the first team was the Philadelphia 76ers, and Mike Abbea. Here also. Now, there's a lot of players that won't be able to make it baseball to start, so hopefully that might cut down some of the players. Benjamin Stinson. I don't think he's going to be here either. Hasuka, Jordan Francis. Jordan France. Tripp Jenkins. She has softball tonight, Brier Marx. Moses. He is also the son of our city manager, too.
He's a good kid.
Which was a lot of pressure on me coaching her kids, too, so. And Soli, Solomon. So, Soli, he went about three-fourths of the year without scoring one bucket, and then once he scored that one bucket, he did not want to pass it ever again. And last but not least, Jaden Weisenberger. This was the 76ers team. So, one great thing that we did with the league, we got actually registered and officially recognized it by the NBA as an NBA Junior League. There's no other leagues in this state that has that recognition, so because of that, we were able, actually able to use NBA team names, and moving forward, we'll be able to get, you know, apparel and things like that, so it's really taken this league to the next level, so that's another great thing that we was able to accomplish this year, so.
Congratulations, guys.
Now, for the other team, the Bulls, we have Clay Dustin. All year, I was called and gone by the wrong name of Clay and Dustin, and sometimes didn't call. I kept on getting his name wrong, but he finally got it right. Next one, we got Zepplin Layton. You want to run that fastball before it? Next, we have Evian Mahoney. All right, next up. She gets two round of applause. Evian, she was called while she was. All right, next we have Malata Mahoney. Next, we got Adely Shaker. And we have Lucas Smith. So, I think my favorite thing about this player right here was, he would start off the game talking trash, and I had times like, hey, you got a square couple of corners, then we talk trash, and then finally got to it, but he figured it out. Next, we have Jerry Warner, who's got baseball tonight. And last, we have Titus Wilson. He's supposed to be here tonight. Actually, one great thing about Titus is he started playing in the upper division when he was eight years old. So, he starts at 100. He was eight years old and was playing with the upper, the older kids, and truly amazing talent, and I'm glad, I'm glad he's on my team this year. So, that, this is our team. Thank you, guys. We really appreciate you guys coming, and it's a big day for us, and some of the happy things Clarksville darned you guys. I just got a couple words. Stadium balls, sports, it's a great thing. He never runs that far against stadium balls or something. He wants to be in the office, and just. He's got trouble tip, I'm going to counter question everybody, so he's all out of trouble. Thank you, guys, and I appreciate it.
Congratulations, fellas.
Proof of the minutes of the regular session of March 6th.
So moved.
We have a motion in second, all in favor. All opposed, motion carried.
Public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
We will now open the public hearing on the proposed budget for 2025, 2026. Anybody wishing to speak for or against may do so at this time.
Good evening. My name is Victor Folio, and I currently serve as the trustee of the Clarksville Harrison Public Library. We oversee the Waldemore, which you all are very well familiar with, and I don't know where we stand on it in regards to the funding that we requested for the upcoming fiscal year, but I would encourage you to please list us as one of the beneficiaries in the budget. I believe we asked for $35,000 to go towards the Waldemore manager. We have a young woman there that is quite qualified in library and museum studies and is currently fulfilling the post of the manager for the live, for the Waldemore on behalf of the library. I just don't know, I thought about this, and I tried to put pen to paper on my feelings about the relationship of the city and the library and the workings of Waldemore, and there's so much yet to be done there in regards to its renovation, and the possibilities are endless of what we could be doing with it. Just today, we were discussing the Schindt and Community Band, it has asked to use the lawn of Waldemore July 12th, and where their position there on the lawn, it's not the best of shade, and it's not very comfortable there, and I said if we had the patio completed, they could use the patio on the side of the building as a stage, and the audience could be sitting in the, on the lawn, but that hasn't been completed yet. We have numerous things that need to get done, and one of those is having someone on site that can oversee some of the things that need to be accomplished. We need someone on site during the opening hours of the library who can also oversee the comings and goings of folks, the needs of folks that are studying on the second floor in the West Virginia collection, or the folks that are utilizing first floor reception hall, which is used for numerous different groups within the community, whether they be the League for Service, the Garden Club, the Genealogy, the Rock Club, the, all the Civil War Roundtable folks. So, the building is getting used by the community, and don't let me forget, musical groups that use the space as well. We have the Steinway Piano in there from the Cultural Foundation that gets used by a lot of the community. So, I would, I would hope that you would reconsider, if you haven't already considered it, making sure that we have that money placed in the, in the budget so we can continue our good works there. We're trying to make, that's basically the cultural district down there, and the Waldemore is the crown jewel of that area, and it's also the living room of Clarksville. You've heard me speak about this before, previous councils have heard me speak about it before. I feel that we've got a strong library director now, who's from Clarksville, who understands the needs of Clarksville and Harrison County. We also have trustees there that are, many are born and reared here, and now they're sitting on this, on the library board, and they're wanting to see the success of the library and Waldemore. Again, I'm here advocating on behalf of Waldemore and the money that we need to have an onsite building manager who's also versed in library activities as well as museum activities. So, with that being said, does anyone have any questions for me? No? Okay. I did leave on your behalf a patron's guide for the next quarter for the library activities, as well as a guide for all the services we have there at the library, and that just probably covers about three-fourths of the things that those folks do here, so. But thank you for your time, and I wish you all the best of luck, and welcome spring.
Thank you, Mr. Folio. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for the public hearing?
Just, just a point of order, if we could, if we could open these doors back up. If you like, I appreciate it. This is a public meeting, and we closed door. I mean, there's a public hearing.
No one else is to speak, we'll close the public hearing.
Petitions, communications, and public hearings. Robert Matheny with Behring Advisors wishes to address the council concerning the Prevent and Protect program.
Good evening. As Annette said, I'm Robert Matheny. I'm a marketing advisor with Behring Advisors, and Mayor Malpatia, thank you for inviting us here this evening to speak before the council, and what I wanted to talk just a little bit about this evening, Behring Advisors is a local owned company. I'm sure that you're familiar with some of the owners. My brother John Matheny, who is senior director, is with me here this evening. Phil Riley and Brad Carmichael, who are former executives with the gas company, and they've been in the municipal space for many years, working in public utilities and other municipal government functions, but I think most importantly to mention to this council is Jim Hunt, who is former mayor of Clarksville and served many years on this council. That's who we are, and what I wanted to talk about, and I'm sure some of the staff is probably cringing, because we've talked to them ad nauseam about this program, but I do want to thank them for their patience and their willingness to talk to us with this Prevent and Protect program. I've left some literature there for you. I'll be very brief. I know that we had an opportunity to speak to some of you at the Municipal League Conference in Charleston this week, and that was enjoyable, and it's always good to see our local folks, and, you know, with Behring being a local company, that's just a natural match. The Prevent and Protect program, it is a program, well, let me say this, Behring is a company that is designed to consult with local, or any government, really, but we focus on local government, on products and projects and programs, and when we came across the Prevent and Protect, we liked it so much that we bought this program, so now it's one of our top programs. The West Virginia Municipal League, oh, I'm sorry. The West Virginia Municipal League liked the program so much that they endorsed it. I think a lot of you are familiar with Travis Bloster, who is the city manager now in Fairmont. When he was the director of the Municipal League, he was a champion for this project or product, and in addition to that, there are similar organizations in Maryland and Pennsylvania, the partners with the Municipal League, were endorsed both in Pennsylvania and in Maryland with this Prevent and Protect. So, just to give you real quick, if you would look at the single sheet, not the trifold, Prevent and Protect is an employee benefit program, and I'm watching the clock, Annette, so I want to make sure I stay, I want to respect your time, but it is a wellness program for your employees, and if they participate in that, they receive tax credit and pre-tax on these products, and in order to participate in it, they participate, if you see where it says fiscal, it is a wellness plan, and it's AI-based recommendations. It addresses diet and exercise habits, healthy habits, goal setting, chronic disease management, monitoring of key vital signs, abuse and addiction recovery, and many other things. But to participate in this program, it is completely volunteer. Your employee would sit down with an enroller from our company, and they would decide whether it works for them or not. So, should they volunteer to take it, the fiscal comes with it. Then if you would jump over two columns to where it's financial, and this is the nice thing, with their savings from tax, they're able to pick up add-on benefits such as universal or whole life, accident, disability, hospital indemnity, and the nice thing about it, because it's pre-tax, they have no out-of-pocket cost for this. This comes from the saving on the tax. And then the center component is the mental, and if you look at the little trifold I gave you, this is probably what drew me near and dear to this. If you'll see, more first responders die from suicide than in the line of duty. There's also a component with this, and it's not only for first responders. If you think about it today, first responders could be found in the schools as teachers, here around City Hall, your code enforcement, your public works people, anybody's exposed with everything that's going on with addiction and a lot of the problems that we have in the cities these days, you can relate that to just about any employee. One of the parts from coming from government, myself as a government leader, I like that at the end of the day, if an employee participates in this, it lowers their FIC attacks. Am I done?
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds, okay. The city doesn't have to match that FIC attacks, so the city could, their budget would increase in what they budgeted for FIC attacks. So, for an example, if Clarksville would have 200 employees participate, that would be about $120,000 that's utilized in your budget as carryover money. We have several cities, you know, that are taking place in this in several different states, and again, I respect your time, and if you have any questions, whip it on us. Okay, thank you, guys.
Jody Barberio wishes to address council concerning the Northview Pride Committee concerns.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us, meaning Northview Pride Committee this time, for us to speak. We've had a long time working relationship with council, and as always, we hope to continue working with you. Tonight, we wanted to bring forth some of our main concerns. First of all, a few months ago, we were given devastating news that Northview Elementary would be closing, and this feels like another blow to our neighborhood, because schools make our communities, and they make our neighborhood alive with youth, you know, the young people. City council didn't have a vote on that, I, we understand that, but it demonstrates that how much a decision by another government agency can affect so many people in so many ways, and it demonstrates how important it is for people and agencies to work together. You know the consequences of this building if it's empty, and we are urging you to work with whoever you have to work with to make sure that the building is utilized and there's vitality, it puts some kind of vitality in our community. Our group has worked with city council and code enforcement, we've been trying to urge people to focus on a couple of things that could happen concerning property management. One, the first thing we've seen a lot of is porch storage, a lot of stoves, washers, broken furniture, garbage bags, things like that, they've been stored there for months and for years. The second thing we are kind of focused on is parking. Cars and trucks are parking on the tree lawn, and it's kind of gotten out of hand a little bit. They're rutting the tree lawns and oftentimes blocking the sidewalks, too. So, people are parking in their yards, too. There isn't any concrete or gravel surfaces, and we think that these two things alone would probably go a long way to improving the looks of the neighborhood, so we're encouraging this to be monitored a lot more closely. And thirdly, when people come into our neighborhood, we want them to have a positive impression of it, and I don't know if you've noticed, but the city sign that says Northview has faded out and it's peeling, and we would like to see it fixed or possibly replace it with a new sign. And finally, these things seem like little things, but those little things add up, and they can have a positive effect on the neighborhood. And our mission statement for Northview Pride Committee is that we want our neighborhood to be safe and clean, and we hope that we can continue collaboration with you so that we can accomplish those things. So, thank you again.
City Clarksville information. A zoning form in connection with an application to operate a private club, private wine restaurant or tavern was filed by Clarksville City Parks, doing business as Clarksville's Clapson, West Virginia Route 8 Adams Park, and returned to the applicant on March 12, 2025. Unfinished business, consideration of second and final reading and public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Clarksburg to amend section 745.06, 745.13, 745.16, 745.17, 745.20 and 745.23 of the Business and Taxation Section of the codified ordinances. Notices regarding the public hearing appeared in the expedited telegram on March 11th and March 8th.
We will now open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak forward, please, may do so at this time. We will close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Question. So, on this one, and I apologize, I was absent the last two meetings, so this is all me, but if I can get some clarification, is there anything in here substantially different than what the article already states, besides adding additional people to enforce it, when you still have the opportunity from the Director of Finance to delegate and to provide those individuals to do so?
It's, it only allows in writing more people.
Okay.
That's, that's the only consideration.
So we're not, we're not attempting to add anybody else, correct?
No.
But the Director of Finance does have the right, per the agreement, or per the ordinance as it's originally states, to name anybody on their behalf, as, as, right? That's all.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Martin How?
No.
Will Hyman?
Yes.
Mark Jackson?
Yes.
Wayne Work?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riffle?
Yes.
Mayor Malchow?
Yes.
Consideration of second final reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending section 1730.02 and 1730.07 of the vacant building registration program. Notices appeared as previously stated.
We will now open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak forward, please, may do so at this time. We will close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. We have a motion in a second.
Again, question, again, same reasoning, wasn't here the last two meetings. But on this one, this ordinance was not designed to be money generating for the general fund, but just an encouragement for the vacant property owners to do something with the building, but also, I guess I have a question regarding how we're enforcing the vacant building registration. And this has been a concern of mine, I think I brought it forward before, an individual reached out to me again today regarding this, they had an issue, and his brother is one that he's being cited for it, and the building by the code is not vacant, and he's been up here a couple times, pled his case, and his building continues not to come off of the list, and they keep accumulating the fees, and even in 2016, or after it was enforced through 19, I think he was kept in 20, he was reassured that he was still under the ordinance and wasn't a violation of it. So I'm just wondering, how many are on the list, are they being, is it equally enforced across the board throughout the community? And maybe if I can get a list of other people who've had these fees waived and the reasoning behind that as well.
Okay, so I can get a list of everybody that's on the vacant property list, as we find out where vacant properties are, they are assessed these fees as well. If you can direct that person to code or send that address, I'll go and talk to code?
They've been to code and they've been to the Finance Director.
Okay, so I will.
And I believe they've been to you.
So, we enforce the model of how it's written, if that person disagrees with it, I will look at it. But anything that's written, that's how we're going to enforce, I don't know who you're speaking about, so I'll have to have that address to check into that in a few, like this week.
Okay, I guess, I guess in the, in the ordinance itself, under 1730.02 definitions in C, which I guess is now going to be D, under the occupied, so it says for the purpose of this section, evidence offered to prove that a building is so occupied may include, but shall not be limited to, and it lists the various of items that they could have on or service to, and one of those is the electric, and they do have electric to the facility, they use it as a storage, so it's not, it's not sitting, I mean, it's not sitting vacant, it's being utilized. So, I mean, I think in that instance, I think they do comply under the ordinance as it was written.
I think we know, maybe know which property you're talking about, and my understanding is the owner may be running business, so we've suggested that this person get a business license, because they're selling materials and product out of that location, so he has to, it's one or the other.
Okay, so, so he, so he is under, so I guess we agree, he does, he does comply. Now, the business license issue, that falls under the business and tax issue, if that's the case, but I just don't think he should be being charged under the vacant property ordinance. And with that said, additionally, because if this ordinance is passed, we're going to greatly, greatly increase the fees, and one that sticks out to me is, under C of that same section, 1730.07, I guess it's subsection C for the fees, we're doing an additional $20 fee for each consecutive day that a vacant structure or abandoned building remains on the vacant property registry list beyond 12 consecutive months. So, if my calculation's correct, that's $7,300 a year in addition to the other thousand, so $8,300, that's going to be billed every year that it's, it's vacant.
Yes.
Okay, well, just, just to bring full circle, I, I think if we need to look at buildings around town, I don't know what predicament we would be in right now if we were charging $8,300 for the vacant properties, I don't know how we would have got out of those fees on some major properties. So for that reason, I want to vote no.
And I had a question too, on the, on the fee schedule, I mean, is there, is there a reason why they substantially increased?
Well, following the model that other cities in West Virginia are using to try to get rid of slum and blood.
Okay, and so, I mean, are we just not making enough money off the current vacant property fees now to?
It's not about making money, it's about.
Well, you didn't, you didn't hear the rest of my question. So, are we not making enough money from the, you know, from the vacant property fees to cover the cost to board up and secure structures?
That's not the intent, is to have all these boarded up structures, the intent is if you have a vacant structure, then we want you to either develop it, if it's a home and rented out, or sell it to someone who can, but to, to just, the goal isn't to just charge enough to board it up and have it sit vacant.
Okay, so.
That doesn't, that doesn't accomplish anything into the city to get these vacant properties moving in some fashion.
I mean, I understand what you're saying to a point, I mean, to a point, yeah, folks that have the means to, you know, to fix their structures should do it, but what's to say that, you know, grandma died and there's an empty house and the kids live in Georgia, and they may not have the resources to, you know, to fix up grandma's house or even sell it, or if it doesn't sell, and they can't, and it's on the market for over a year, are they going to get charged $7,500 too?
Yes, they would. And they have, they do have the option to sell, if they can't sell, there's other options to give it to the city through the land bank, there's other, there's other ways to get rid of the property, but these are what other, these are the fees other cities are using to help with this problem of the amount of vacant structures that we have that are a health risk and they're a safety risk to the public in regards to fire and people who are unhoused using those facilities. This is a way to encourage people to use those vacant properties in some fashion.
And so the current fee structure is not encouraging them?
I would say it's not working as effectively as it should.
Okay, and so, so these other municipalities who have, who have increased this fee structure that we're trying to copy, have they found success in this?
Actually, I can speak on that, at the Municipal League, there was a workshop, dilapidate properties, and Charleston is one of the cities that we were mirroring off that, the Municipal League and the speaker of that meeting actually was championing Charleston's route and effective as, and that's the city, and some of the things that we've tried to replicate, and so based on that, Municipal League and other cities around the state, they would say yes to that.
Are they saying what percentage of decrease they're having with that, or are they just championing it because it's a?
They're saying it's successful.
I mean, but is there, are they measuring it, is it measurable what they're doing? I mean, do they have data, or are they just saying it's successful?
Yeah, I would assume, I mean, the, I mean, the Municipal League wouldn't champion something without the results, I mean, they.
Well, again, and the reason why I bring it up, I mean, this was passed in 2016, and again, I, I get it, I mean, it was being championed then, but I mean, there's more, there's other things in addition to a vacant building registration program that goes in conjunction with that to make this successful. This alone is not going to be successful, but if we're, if we have code enforcement looking for vacant buildings versus citing the building first or doing other things to it, this, this is just going to, I mean, you can have a list of 200, but then at the end of the day, you have all these costs built up, you're not receiving, people aren't paying it. What's the outcome? We have, we have a big, it's probably a county nightmare to keep accumulating these fees, the debt's sitting there, the non, the majority of it's going to be non-collectable debt, and then what happens at the end of it?
Well, debt for these homes, we can, we can report to put a lien on the home, so we can use that as a tool to get these properties moving, but I'd say, when you talk to the fire chief, a significant percentage of the fires that we have are these properties, and we have to use whatever tools we have to try to get these properties moving and boarding it up and just covering those costs is not effective to do that.
So I guess my question would be, out of the vacant buildings, I wonder what percent, and again, I don't want to have these on the list.
There's 170 on the demolition list, which are.
Well, that's a demolition list, so I, I, let's make sure that's separate from the vacant building.
Most of those are vacant.
Well, but again, they're under demo, so.
But they're still vacant.
Yeah, but, so are we going to call, I guess, here's my question, if it's, if it's, if it's under demo and somebody owns that property, they have a demo cost, it's under demo, there's no, and there's no mechanism to bring it off a demo, there is no mechanism to bring it off. So, the appeal process is exhausted, now it's waiting in line to be demoed, and additionally, now they're waiting probably for the city to tear it down, in the meantime, we're going to keep putting $7,200 fees on them, because it's been on a demo list for five years, so.
So they can take their home off the demo list, what they can't do is once it's put up to contract to tear down, they cannot remove it off of that, but they absolutely can come and take their house off the demo list if they come with a plan to code.
Within how many days of the demo being put on?
There's no restriction.
There is, so there is a timeframe that you have to submit your appeal to the Boca Board to be heard, and if you, that appeal process relapses, there is no mechanism, the only mechanism is you go over across the street to Circuit Court, that's the only mechanism there is, and even then, the judge isn't looking at it to take it off of the demo list, he's making sure procedurally it was done correctly.
But.
But I, I guess I'll call the question, I mean, I could sit here all day with the vague this, but, and I will say, and I think since we're talking about mirroring other people's programs, I mean, we were one of the first to state to implement this, and we mirrored another one, but additionally, a very successful demolition program that was ramped up for many, many years all over the state of West Virginia, they, they mirrored the city of Clarksburg's demolition program. Now, when that came through a screeching halt, everybody else excelled on that, we got backlogged for three, four, probably at least four years, and that's why we have 170 on the demolition list, otherwise, we probably could have down to 20 or 30. And, and the reality of it is, you're always going to have, you're always going to have a demolition list, you're never not going to have one. So, it's just a, it's a math, it's a math equation, you're never going to be able to clear, so, go ahead, Mr. Deans.
Yeah, thanks, Councilman Howe, so I'm, I'm having a little trouble in, in the finding kind of the requirements for being on the list, but to go back to Councilman Worth's question, so you inherited property, you don't intend, you don't want to rent it, you're trying to sell it, it takes six months to sell, after three months, it's on the vacant property list even though you're, you're attempting to sell it? Is there, I mean, is there any, is there any leeway, or, you know, I'm, I'm in favor generally of, of a little more of a, of a stick than a carrot in, in this program, but if people are acting in good faith and the property isn't moving, that seems, seems counterintuitive to me.
It does, but the other way I would put it, if they're selling a house that's assessed 70 for 150 and they could say, we're trying to sell it, right, are they, are they really putting their best efforts in to sell it? So I think those type of issues, if they came in to talk to us, we'd do it on a case-by-case basis and make an exception.
And even if individuals are putting their effort in, I mean, if that house is the next door to your house, how long do you want that house to sit there and start to get dilapidated? This individual lives in Atlanta or somewhere, and they're not coming into town to do any work on that house, now we've got a dilapidated property and it's continually going down, at some point, we have to say no, and so, you know, it's important that we continually, we have to start being more proactive, you know, we have to make these moves forward to make individuals start to do things with these properties so that we don't have these dilapidated. And I 100% agree with that, again, so let's ramp up the demolition side of the program, and let's really get to the root of the cause of the problem, it's, it's the ones that've been sitting there now for 10 years, five years, six years, one year, let's get those done, let's, let's do that.
Well, I think if you ramp up the demolition program, we're not looking at the bigger picture. If we, we can't champion the demolition program, that means we're failing as a city.
Well, I, I just want to make sure we're, either way, I, I mean, it's up for a vote, I mean, voted up or down, it doesn't matter to me, what I'm saying is, I want consistency on how we're enforcing this, because I, I don't believe it is consistent, and there's, I mean, I could name five vacant buildings I know are not on that list, and if they are, or they were, I wonder how they got off of it, so, I mean, and there's many commercial ones that, that were or not, so I just, we need to look at that a little deeper, I really wish we had a work session on this, and I probably would have brought in some examples for you.
So, I, to, and I, I appreciate your, your suggestion or suggestion that there would be some kind of mechanism. Now, I would probably feel a bit better if the mechanism was in here, and I know we probably can't make that amendment tonight, because I don't even know what, I, it's very conceptual in nature, and this is the, this is the final vote, you know, I, I would like there to outline an appeals process, kind of like Councilman Howe had talked, talked about, maybe that's something that we could.
What?
If you think that you shouldn't be on the list.
Councilmember, they're in there.
It is.
Yeah, I was going to correct, this, this has an appeal, I guess.
Does it?
I think where we got off in our discussion.
Sorry.
Was about the demolition appeal process, of the time mattered on that, and the only way it could be rectified is one of the Circuit Court, but that's on, I don't know what page, but 1730.08, the right to appeal, but that's the only thing in here. But I, we were discussing demolition when we got off of that, so I'm sorry for the frustration. Yeah, I have the original ordinance, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, that, then that would explain why I'm having difficulty finding.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We have that.
Okay, okay, but, so there is a, there is a mechanism.
Twenty, 25 days.
Okay.
The main two things is silly.
Yes.
Is creating a mechanism for the city manager, as they put properties on the vacant property list without the property owner participating.
Yes.
Because right now, you have to have to fill out a paperwork or you have to cite them and take them into this before. So, this provides a mechanism, I've already, Mr. Lane, I've already identified some properties that we're either going to get with this, if it comes to a house that's a property he knows is vacant, we'll put those out there on notice. If it comes to a house that's not properties he knows are vacant, we'll put those out there on notice as well, put those on the list. So that's number one. Number two, it significantly increases the vacant property penalty. So I think on the first half, I can't see where there being dispute for us being able to put those on there once we get proper notice. And the second half of that would be the increase. Those are the two things that you're changing from the current situation.
And I agree with Mr. Marsh's, that the first, you know, the first part of that, you know, yeah, I mean, you can't, if someone just leaves their property vacant and they don't care about it and they just want to sit and let it rot, then yeah, we should have the authority to put it on the vacant property list. The other, the issue I have is just the fee structure. You know, I'm just thinking, you know, how, you know, how do we justify this new fee structure? And then, because, because the thing is, at the end of the year, like, if someone doesn't give a crap about their property and they just let it sit vacant, you know, for over a year, well, we're going to, we're going to fine them seventy, seventy-three hundred dollars. They're not going to pay in any way. So what happens is we put a lien on their property. Then that property has a hard time selling because there's a lien on it. So I mean, it's just, I mean, I think the second part's just kind of counterproductive. Yeah, let's go after these people hard, you know, by saying, we're going to put you on the vacant property list if you, if these, you know, if these things are not met.
But we're not going to put a lien on if they're actively trying to sell it. That would, our, my intention is, is to not tear down as many homes as we can in Clarksburg. I would much rather see them redeveloped and sold to people who need a home.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, but what do we do when they don't pay this seventy-three hundred dollar fine? What's the mechanism then?
You, you can, if they're actively trying to sell it or, or get rid of the home in another way, you can put a lien on the house and that's, that's the option. Now, I've talked to council before, I've talked to the orders office about other mechanisms and that is something we're currently working on. This, the fee schedule for something like this, if they let a home or property go for so long, they're not, I don't think they're going to be worried about the fees that much. But it's, because working in other cities, I believe that we need to try it here.
I mean, the same logic, if they're not going to pay the fees when they're amended, they're not going to pay the fees with the original fees, obviously haven't. I asked Shuri about what we've collected over the last several years since twenty-fifth, and it's fluctuated. I think the most at one point was like fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. You may correct me if I'm wrong. I think at the, at the moment, it's like eighty-eight hundred dollars for this fiscal year. And for the first several years, it was hardly, it was any collected at all from twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen era. So I mean, if I remember correctly.
Councilman Hyman, it's more these increasing fees and it may not work, but we would like to try.
Well, sure, I don't, what I'm saying is, if they're not going to pay the amended fees that we're proposing here, they probably not going to pay the original fees. So I mean, it's, you can't get blood from a turtle, that's what I've always been told, sir.
We're hoping that the increased fees will get people to get some of these properties moving. It's not, this isn't a revenue generator.
Oh, sure.
This isn't an incentive to try to get these properties sold and renovated. That's what we're hoping that this.
And in the case of property, you know, if they have a realtor son out front, I believe code and city staff can, can say, okay, they're genuinely making an effort. Even, it may be priced way out of their, you know, the appraised value, but at the end of the day, I mean, they're still making an effort, they're, you know, I don't know.
I got one more question. So instead of liens, can, can you go to court and file attachments on these votes?
And there's some mechanisms for foreclosure to look at from the chapter eleven of the tax code.
And can this be utilized in an ordinance like this?
I believe you could, A, you could go to, move to enforce the lien. You may also be able to do the foreclosure. I'm still looking at that issue and I'm going to talk to our other city attorneys about that. We discussed that the other day, it's one of the things we're talking about. But there are mechanisms in chapter eleven, which is the tax, general tax code that provides for foreclosure situations. And whether we're going to do that here or not is our question. But I think partly the incentive here is to get, to incentivize this to get these properties on the market. A good example would be the property you brought up. I think it was a bit over a year ago, Councilman Worth, the one over in Adamston on the corner there. And that's one of the rules on vacant property list. And that's one they currently have good funding for to say, we want to raise money to tear it down. So this gives us an option to go and try to convince them to do something with that, whether that's to give that away or do something else with it. It's kind of the way that we're dealing with this at this time.
Another discussion? We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Ryan Deans?
Yes.
Martin Howell?
No.
Will Hyman?
Yes.
Mark Jackson?
Yes.
Wayne Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riffle?
Yes.
Mayor Malcham?
Consideration of second and final reading and public hearing of ordinance amending section seventeen zero seven point zero nine to modify requirements for resurancing of excavation of city streets. Notices appeared as previously stated.
We will now open the public hearing. Anyone listening to speak for instance may do so at this time. We will close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
New business, consideration of approval of the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in the amount of seventeen million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, ninety-nine dollars for the general fund, ninety-one thousand, three hundred dollars for the Kohl Severance Tax Fund, three hundred and thirty-six thousand for the police finance care fund, one million, seven hundred and nineteen, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the excess property tax fund, one million, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the financial stabilization fund, six million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the sales and use tax fund, and one million, seven hundred and sixty-two, three hundred dollars for the Robinson Graham Performing Arts Center.
So.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Well, go ahead. I want to make a motion to amend, I would like to make a motion to amend the general fund for the nineteen million, four fifty-six, oh nine nine. I would like to increase that to seventeen million, four ninety-one, zero nine nine to include the Waldemore part-time staff member.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
What's this math? You said seventeen million?
No, it would be nineteen, four fifty-six, zero nine nine plus thirty-five thousand.
No, it would be seventeen, there's another agenda, that's a misprint. Seventeen million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, ninety-nine dollars, amending that number to increase it thirty-five thousand to include the part-time employee at the Waldemore to bring it to seventeen million, four ninety, or four ninety-one, ninety-nine dollars.
So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now back to the original. We have a motion in a second.
All right, I'd like to amend this one as well. Under the sales and use tax, for the one, I'm sorry, sales and use tax, I would like to make a minor amendment in there as well. And it's more or less just separating items. I have a whole bunch of amendments, but I'm not going to go into them. Because I did miss that work session, did not realize we were having one immediately following the meeting before last. But I am not in favor of the Public Works Department to be one hundred percent funded out of the sales and use tax. That, I think, is a worse position we're putting ourselves in than we originally were in. But I'm not going to even fight that battle. But I would, I would like to be open about it and transparent that we separate the contribution to the police pension fund and the contribution to the fire pension fund, which is five hundred thousand dollars based upon the sales and use tax as the original ordinance was approved for those two pension funds. And then separate the contribution to the police and fire pension funds, which the police pension fund is three hundred thousand and the fire pension fund is one point one million. Those are general fund liabilities that are placed in the sales tax and I just think they should be in there separately.
Hold on a second. Police, three hundred thousand?
It's, it's, it would be police-fire pension, two pensions, five hundred thousand each.
Right.
Police general fund pension that's in the sales tax, three hundred thousand. Contribution to the fire pension fund, one point one million. That's another liability of the general fund that's been put into the sales and use tax. So I guess in essence, because the city several years ago went to the MP FRS plan, the, the police is much further ahead on that because of the turnover they've had. So there's more police officers in that plan and that's coming out of the general fund. But that's why those numbers are so.
So are you just asking to separate them in the budget on a separate line item?
I am.
We have a motion, I mean, we have a proposal.
Do you have any comments or that?
That's a, that's a minor judgment.
Sorry, I'll say.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Back to our original. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm a nay.
Ryan Deans?
Yes.
Martin Howell?
No.
Will Hyman?
Yes.
Mark Jackson?
Yes.
Wayne Ward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riffle?
Yes.
And Mayor Malcham?
Yes.
Consideration of first reading of an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the codified ordinances.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All closing. Motion carries.
Consideration of a resolution of the city of Clarksburg, West Virginia to enter into an economic development agreement regarding the Waldo complex.
Madam Clerk, I move we consider a resolution of the city of Clarksburg, West Virginia to enter into an economic development agreement regarding the Waldo complex.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. Gentlemen, I would like to emphasize, this is a deed, not a contract.
It's a what?
It's an agreement. Sorry, agreement. We have a motion, we second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of appointment to the Central West Virginia Transit Authority.
Madam Clerk, I move we appoint Hattie Wright to the Central West Virginia Transit Authority.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Riffle.
No, I'm just joking.
You asked for discussion.
That was my discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Council comments?
Council comments, Mr. Deans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, congratulations to the basketball teams that were here tonight. Congratulations to Coach of the Year, Vice Mayor Riffle. Even though you admitted to paying the refs in front of everybody, but that, that's okay. You know, youth sports are an important part of our community. Youth, anything, youth arts and sports, it's all important. Something that we should be investing money and time into and, you know, I just, again, thank you for investing your time. Mr. Matheny, thank you for coming. I think this is a, a great program that I hope people take advantage of. To Northview Pride, you know, you're my neighbors. Mrs. Barbario was my sixth grade English teacher and made me a better writer. So thank you, you know, I, I share all of the, all of the same things that, that you had, although I might be guilty of the porch storage thing, but we'll work on that. We'll work on it, you know, you know, yeah, put me on the list. Twenty fifteen Pride Avenue. But the, the elementary school, you know, again, besides Mike, I'm probably the next person in this room that lives the closest. And, you know, I agree, we need to utilize the building. There are lots of ways to utilize the building. I shared some stuff with our Economic Development Director earlier last week about a model that they used in Greenbrier County to redevelop an elementary school into apartments. Apartments, community center, all of these things. I even mentioned, wouldn't it be great to have satellite services from the library in Northview? Those are all, those are all really great things, you know? A community school like Northview Elementary leaves a gap. And so we've got to figure out how to fill that and something that I'm dedicated to trying to do. I'm glad that we put the Waldemore employee back in. I think that's a good step for the city. And I'm excited about the economic development that's happening in the city and we're on our way. There's, there's good stuff coming. So hope everyone has a good weekend and we'll see you in April.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Matheny for coming in and, you know, introducing his product to us. You know, basically something that, you know, we can do to help our employees, you know, that's great. And I would like to talk to with you and find out more. Thank you to Ms. Barbario for coming in and sharing with us. You know, we always encourage, you know, people in the community to come in because you see it, we need to hear about it. So, you know, thank you very much. Thank you to the teams that came in. You know, we've had a lot lately with the teams that came in. But I'd like to give a big thank you, especially to Vice Mayor Riffle because he keeps his hand right there on the pulse when it comes to youth sports and the youth in our community. And the youth are our future. And, you know, Jerry does not let that get passed. So, you know, a big thank you to Vice Mayor Riffle as well. The, the agreement with Waldo, I'm excited, I'm excited. I'm excited by the orange cones that are up and down the street and the big signs. Because you know what? That spells progress to me. You know, I don't care how late at night they're out there jackhammering and doing whatever they have to do because this is how we get things built up. So, you know, I'm really excited, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what we should be. People say a lot, you know, I can't wait to get Clarksburg back to what we used to be. No, I want to see Clarksburg as what we should be. So thank you all for coming out, stay engaged with the city and thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Councilman Hyman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to the finance staff and putting their budget together. And the Waldo agreement is really exciting. I know, talked to a couple council members about it and, you know, obviously it's a big step. I'd like to remind council that when we interviewed for city managers to come in here, that was a question we asked every single city manager was about the Waldo. What could you do with the Waldo? What can we do with the Waldo? It's one of the biggest divisive issues in the city. I'm glad we're moving in the direction of its restoration. I hope it's a smashing success. I'm looking forward to see all the work go down on it and hopefully it'll be just another great success and I'm, I'm super excited about it. You know, other than that, have a great weekend and we'll see you again in April.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rainey, work.
You were just looking at me, so. It was nonverbal communications. Yeah, well, I caught all those yesterday and ate three today, so anyhow. I do, I do want to, I do appreciate Councilman Member Howell making that motion to amend the budget to, to add the Waldemore in there. I think it's very important, you know, I mean, if we're, if we're trying to, if we're, if we're trying to market our history here, I think we should put our money where our mouth is, you know, to market that. We've done that with the History Museum and we see great results. You see all those signs up now, you know, those placards and stuff throughout town. Mike runs a great history museum there. I've got to interview about eighteen people, you know, there that just know the history of Clarksburg real well. So I'm really happy to see that and thank you, thank you, Martin, for making that motion. It was good to see the kids here and youth sports and, and thank you, Vice Mayor Jerry Riffle for, you know, being dedicated to youth in this community. You know, that's very commendable and, and it takes a lot of hours to do that. The one group I really want to highlight, though, that came to speak tonight and Jody Barbario spoke of is Northview Pride. I've, I've known, I've known Northview Pride with, going on probably four or five years now. And I tell you, you know, when it comes to a neighborhood that is dedicated. And, and I tell you, you know, when it comes to a neighborhood that is dedicated, you know, to, you know, to, to not only neighborhood watch, but, you know, the beautification, cleanups. I mean, it's Northview Pride and, and if you come to any of their, any of their bimonthly meetings in the summertime, they're usually pretty packed. There's a lot of, a lot of activity and activism in the Northview community and it's because of folks like yourself and, and hopefully, you know, you know, hopefully well, it's springtime, so there'll, there'll be some neighborhood cleanups that we're, we're going to be starting to do, you know, soon. We have one down Monticello on April 9th. We'll have, we'll look more about that posted on Facebook, so. But I really do admire, you know, all, all the work that Northview Pride does and, and always loved going to those meetings because, you know, I mean, you guys just roll the punches and, and you roll it well and, and I, and I tell you, you know, you, you get results. And the reason why you get results is because when you do see something, you say something. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. On the, on, on the ordinance tonight, the second reading of the vacant property, I agree with the first part of it and the reason why I voted yes on that is, is because we, we do need to, we do need to be aggressive going towards that. I don't necessarily agree with the, you know, with the fee schedule. You know, I don't have really enough information on how that has been successful in other municipalities in West Virginia. Maybe I need to study up on that. But I think at the end of the day, we, we do have to be pretty aggressive on that. And, you know, i- if we do have to file attachments on folks, you know, who are not paying liens, not paying fees, then maybe that's something we need to look into. And if state code prevents us from doing that, then I guess we can't do that unless we advocate for that more on a legislative level. But I was kind of torn on that one. It's very exciting to, you know, to hear that, you know, to see that the Waldo is going to be, you know, hopefully redeveloped. That's, that's really, really amazing news, very exciting news. And I appreciate the hard work that, you know, the leadership, you know, and city government has, has put forth to that. I will say, you know, just based on my experience, anything successful takes two things. Hard work and building relationships. And, and at the end of the day, you need to build relationships too. You need to do that from the get-go, not at the 11th hour. So with that said, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackson, did you want?
Yes, I would just also like to say, you know, the thank you, big thank you to our city manager, to her staff, the administrative staff. You know, a lot of people who tune in or come to these meetings, they see city council up here. But, you know, the people that they don't see, the department heads and all of our employees, so I want to make sure that we give a big thank you to them and a big shout out for all the work that they do. You know, 24/7 around the clock, you know, when these individuals are out here, you know, getting that work in, I want to make sure we say a big thank you to them as well.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. You can call me out of order, but I do, I do appreciate Robert Matheny coming up here and, and pitching this. I was looking at this while he was talking about it and, and I tell you, you know, what, what an opportunity for the city, if the city does go with this. Especially, especially the financial aspect with, you know, with, with saving on, on the fike attacks, you know, by providing these benefits, you know. That, that would be, I mean, it'll be a tremendous benefit to our employees. So thank you, Mr. Matheny, for coming up and, and educating us on this.
Anybody else want to take up Mr. House's phone?
I'm gonna take up yours. All right, where to start, Mayor? Well, I want to, I'll reiterate what Mr. Jackson said since that was on my list. Department heads and staff, they do work very hard and I do appreciate that and I understand the budget process. It is very difficult and again, I, I am very appreciative of that. With that said, again, no fault to, to the city managers. Again, you, you've inherited the budget over several years and, and again, I'm just not a fan of where the sales tax has been put and where the direction it went and has gone. And, you know, I, I did run on that when I ran for council, it was the budgetary issues and I'm going to continue on that. I, I did have a rather large amendment to make tonight, but rather than making a substantial amendment and making you all come back next week again to vote on the agenda if it were to pass, I, I decided to let it go and just voted on no on the entire budget. So again, I, I do appreciate that. But, but I would like to bring it up again for the next fiscal year that again, I, I'm going to be speaking about it emphatically and repetitively over and over again. Hopefully I can get some of these amendments done throughout the year to, to get us where I believe we should be back on track for the sales. So the Waldemore, on this one, I, I, I am happy that that amendment passed and Mr. Deans, I, I apologize, I didn't have a chance to return your call. I think it was last week. I'm not sure when it was, but I do apologize on that. But, but I would request from this council, I mean, we, tonight, we passed an economic development agreement for the, for the Waldo unanimously. Well, I really think this council should do, very soon, we need to pass unanimously for the Waldemore. Because they've had a master plan in place. I've spoken about it several times. We have the funding, we have the mechanisms. Let's invest and, and I'm saying let's invest to get the master plan completed. Let's put this to rest. Because if we're going to have a nice Waldo and we've all agreed to invest in it and, and to do what we need to do to support it, we own the Waldo, the Waldemore. So we need to invest in the money and do it. So I'm requesting that that master plan be updated. If we have to pay for it, it's our building, let's pay for it. Let's get the price. Let's bring it back to council. Let's find the funds to do it. I like what Mr. Jackson says. Let's, let's see the construction. Let's get everything going. So I really am determined to get that on the, on the, on the agenda this coming year. If we need help find the funds, I'll help you. And I, I have several places and more amendments to make so we can get in there and get this done. But I really think, and our bond attorney's here, he can, he can definitely take another bond out to finish this one off. I mean, it, to me, it's minimal. It's a minimal investment to get it done, to make Pike Street look wonderful. So I, I really encourage council to get on board and let's get this one completed. You know, and I'll say thank you to Northview Pride. I mean, I, I think you guys do a wonderful job. I've always supported you. I'll always continue to support you where I can, when I can. But you did bring something to light tonight as well about those community welcome signs and quite frankly, I probably hadn't even noticed when I drove past it in Northview, but I'm glad you brought that to our attention. But manager, I, I would like to have the Public Works Department to go through all the communities, all the community signs, do an update to those, an audit of them to see which ones need replaced more than other ones in, in the near future. And I, I think we can, again, start budgeting some funds and that, even though we just passed the budget, I think we can still look at funds as they come in, not that expensive. Okay, but yes, thank you. So if we can get that list and maybe amongst council, we can vote on the order to do them or however you want to do them, but I, I think that desperately needs done for Northview and do them first since they brought it to our attention and then let's move out throughout the city. You know, I, I tell you, I, I, I'll congratulate those fine young individuals up here. You know, I, I think sports is great for children, arts is great for children. It shaped all of my children. I've tuned college now. They've taken sports with them, arts with them, music and everything else. It, it, it does children wonders to be involved in things such as that. Jerry, I, I commend you for coaching. I, I did it myself for my children's teams. I coached two teams consecutively for multiple years. It, it's, it keeps you out there in the community. It does. It keeps you in tune to what's going on. And speak with the parents one way or another, like or not, to what they might be complaining about, playing time or what. But it, it, it is a great opportunity and, and I do like to see that we are continuing to support youth sports and, and everything else that goes along with it. It, it does help them grow and mold them as, as young adults as they move forward. You know, Mr. Matheny, both of you, I guess, I, I, you know, I appreciate you coming tonight. I had the opportunity to talk to John Yu and Phil last year at the Summer Municipal League. Now, I'm a little bit shocked we're still sitting here today even contemplating what to do. I, I hope we're moving this forward ASAP. I think this is a great program, always supported it. Always supported all, every program you guys have brought to us over the years. You guys hit home runs with them. So I greatly appreciate that and bringing that forward. And then, you know, with the Waldo, with, with that agreement, you know, I, I, it was very difficult for me to come to an agreement. I don't think we take these things lightly. I, I think there's a lot of things we as council have to weigh. I don't think it's just a splash. It's things that we want done. You know, I've always supported the Waldo, doing something with it one way or another. You know, it, it's a great opportunity that there's a developer in place now that has the means, the ways to do it. You know, when, when we've talked about vacant building registration program and the increase of fees, when I reflect back and look, and this is why I'm against it because I, I think there's sometimes buildings such as that that sat vacant. I think, what if we just keep assessing at 10,000 every year and it builds up and even trying to work with the property owner then, would they want to sell it? But what was the reasonable price? Because every time they told me, you bring in a developer that's not even close to the dollar amount they wanted at the time. So I, I think that's the issues that I have struggling with vacant building registration programs based upon how we're actually forcing or encouraging people to offload their property. I mean, anybody has a value in mind what their property is worth and, and I think that's the difficulty of it. So again, I, I am excited about the Waldo. I'm, I'm very encouraged that it could come to fruition. You know, hearing the background, I, I think has a great opportunity. But again, you know, I, I definitely had strong reservations coming in of how it was going to do, how it was going to proceed. But some of those reservations were laid to rest right prior to the meeting. So again, thank you to the staff putting that together. I don't want you to have to come back to me, Mayor. Let me take a second here. He want to go again? Lastly, just a thank you to Chief Kitty, Chief Green. You know, I think you, you both participated or your staff participated in assisting RCB Boys Basketball Team. That meant a lot to them. The coach called me to request that that, to have an escort out of town and that deeply meant a lot to the team. And thank you to the Robbins, Grant staff for putting the picture up there, wishing them good luck, you know, on that parade route. They did go by to take a look at it on the way out of town. I'm sure it inspired them, but it wasn't the outcome we all wished for, for the Boys team. But again, they had a great season and, you know, we wish them good luck next year. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Riffle?
Thank you, sir. Today was an exciting night for me. Having the kids here was great. Glad they came in. I think it's big to them. They were really excited when they were getting the messages and prepared to tell me how excited they were to be there. Going to downtown, big, you know, down, like big, the big downtown, big buildings and coming up here, like they just thought it was a very grand thing. So I, I was very excited to do that for them. The money for the Waldemore, I'm obviously a big supporter of the Waldemore. And my goal throughout all of it, the conversations I've had with the library board, history museum, former director, the current director, it's always been about getting more things in there. I think more than three fourths of the city has probably never been inside there and it's a too beautiful building for people not to have been inside there. So like everybody and I agree, we, we should do more. And I, are you still the interim? Did you get the full time?
I'm still considered interim.
Well, we got to change that if we can. We got to push for that because honestly, I, I appreciate you hearing us, hearing the concerns and putting in, you know, the efforts to try to do more. And so I'm excited. Obviously I probably can't go to Mother's Day tea, but if we have a Father's Day tea, I will attend to that. But I'm looking forward to that. I want to thank all the staff for the budget first off. That's, you know, it's a lot of work. Thank the finance department, everybody involved. I was at the municipal league this past week and I, I honestly, I go to almost all of them. I, I find them so valuable. For being in a dilapidated structure, condemned, abandoned structure workshop. I, I honestly, I strongly believe if everybody on this panel was in that workshop, I, I think they would be in favor or more in favor of this and be more understanding and seeing the successes. And it's one thing that I've seen is if the municipal league overall supports it, they're hearing from all the cities. That's their job is to oversee all the cities. And so they get a general consensus and that's when they start putting these workshops together and then they bring in people from WBU and other entities to come help push this because they believe it to be helpful and they want it throughout all their cities. That's their goal. That's their jobs. So it, it's great going down. We had a great meeting with the City of Bridgeport, the City of Fairmont. We met with our delegate, our Senator Queen. He's going to help quarterback some DOH problems and, and try to get things fixed. Emily Drive intersection, they're, they're going to try to get the bridge coming out from the second street. And there's a lot of things that we talked with the City of Bridgeport and I always make my jokes about the City of Bridgeport, but it was, I made a few in that meeting as well, of course I could have to. But it was a great meeting and Senator Queen was excited to see us both at the table at the same time. The City of Fairmont, we had some great conversations, conversations. The new city manager Travis Bossard is well respected, I believe, by almost everybody up here. I mean, he just, you know, very knowledgeable and, and having a partnership with him would be great and city manager of Ford, in Bridgeport. I, I like what I've talked to him about and I think he's going to do great things for Bridgeport and I think he'll also look at things how we can work together. Build on the line, as I told them and I, he agreed. I think it's something that we could look into. And again, I mean, the Waldo, it's, it is the most important building in this city. It has been since I've been alive, everybody I've talked to, from the people from the history museum to my parents, to the generations of my family that have, you know, thought highly of that building and to everybody I've ever talked to. When you go around campaigning, when you're on the council, everybody talks about it. For some generations, they've never seen it even open. For many generations, they've never seen it as live as it was at one point. This is the biggest domino to fall. If this, you know, we're able to get that, I, I believe, you know, great things are going to come from it. And it takes a lot of work and I want to thank everybody. Dr. Nicholson, Mr. Police, city manager Phil, Attorney Marsh, everybody that had a hand in there and everybody that was involved. It's, I appreciate you guys not leaving any stone unturned, doing everything you can. I truly appreciate it. If I don't tell you guys enough, I, you know, I apologize and I should tell you more. The city, the city of citizens, a lot of these things happen behind the scenes. Our citizens will see things and they will, you know, their appreciation will be glowing. You guys will be able to see it and so it's going to be great for us to amend them and yeah, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. See something, say something. Pick up the phone, dial 911. Can't do anything. You don't call, tell us. Thank you, Northview Pride. Ladies are determined and that's great. You know, hey, I was born and raised in Northview, so, you know, that, that, Northview has a place in my heart. Thank you, Public Works. Thank you, the fire departments, police departments. Vice Mayor said we had good meetings in Charleston. You know, I've been an advocate for this for a long time and we sat down at the table and I brought it up to Bridgeport and Bridgeport liked it. I, I think we need to stop space shit with Emily Drive and, and Bridgeport is willing to, to go together with us to, to, to make this, this happen because, you know, for our fire trucks, if it's four o'clock or between four and 5:30, you know, those trucks have to lumber up over that hill. That's a lot of weight. you know, those trucks have to lumber up over that hill and that's a lot of weight. And half the time, people don't get out of their way. And if they have to slow down, it takes some time to get their momentum back up. And two, three minutes in a fire can mean a heck of a lot to lives and buildings. So, hopefully, we can work with Bridgeport and get something done there. I have a great mayor's announcement. This is going to be wonderful. Fall, spring cleanup starts March 24th and runs through April 11th. So, it'll be posted in the paper and it'll also be on our website. Mr. Matheny and Matheny, thank you, gentlemen. I met with you in Charleston, very informative. We'll put this, get this on the agenda and we'll get a vote on it. Other than that, everybody have a nice weekend, be safe and happy spring.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
I'm sorry?
Is that the April 3rd agenda for the Barrens of Iza?
That's not something that would come to council. That's something that would be done through a primary.
The council doesn't get the phone on?
I was going to move to a juror, but you guys want to keep talking? Go ahead.
Then they have a motion to adjourn.
I will move to a juror.
We're adjourned.